Okay, good afternoon. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Board Work Session. It is Wednesday, February twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty four. It is two oh two P M. My name is Ty Menter, Chair of the Board. Vice Chair Commissioner Fornier is participating through Zoom. We have Commissioner Carolina Mejia, Commissioner Gary Edwards, and Commissioner Emily Klaus, as well as our Assistant County Manager Rob Gelder. We have an esteemed group of guests here for our first item. This is a work session that will last till four thirty if necessary for public virtual attendance. You may follow along on the Thurston County YouTube channel. First topic this afternoon is our, I guess, annual check-in with our Thurston County Superintendent of Schools. So we're very pleased to have, I think, the biggest crew that we've had since I've been on the board, six years. So thank you all for coming, and we'll start with introductions of these folks, maybe start next to Rob.
Brian Barr, Superintendent Rainier School District.
Jennifer Bethman, Superintendent Rochester.
Deb Clemens, Superintendent of North Thurston Public Schools.
Chris Wood, Superintendent Young Community Schools.
Clint Hennecott, Superintendent Tenino.
Patrick Murphy, Superintendent Olympia.
Kevin Bogertson, Superintendent Tom Water.
Flip Vernon, Superintendent E S D one thirteen Superintendent.
Full crew. Okay, so it's an open discussion. We don't have any particular agenda. Usually we just kind of let, give each one of you the floor to talk about, you know, overview, challenges, something special you want the board to know. We just kind of like to hear how things are going, and it gives us a good preview of what might be coming down the road. So just start back with you, sir.
Okay. Well, our board has been working on their strategic planning, and they just finished their strategic plan, and we're working through those things. The thing that I'm most excited about is that we just passed our E P and O levy, and that we passed a capital levy from the Rainier community chose to accept that. So we're excited, and it's for regular, the E P and O is for, you know, you know, maintenance and everything, the normal four-year levy that we normally run. Our capital levy is for student safety, school security, and maintenance upgrades. We have a high school building that was built in nineteen seventy-two that needs a lot of repair. We still have the same heating system that we had in there when it was built. And we have had to superglue parts to keep it from running because we can't find parts anymore. So lots of things that we've been working to get, we need, we need a new track. It's one of the other things the community was supportive of. We did lots of surveys and community meetings, and our track is wore out. It's cracked. We've been filling it for the last four years with tar and just trying to keep it, be able to use it. So we're excited about those things. The other thing that we're concerned about is budget. You know, we're always working on our budget, making sure that we're being good stewards of our money in Rainier. But when McCleary came out and the pain that they're fully funding schools and they're not. And, you know, my district does not get regionalization. And so we, we struggle with being, being able to compete with some of our bigger districts around us. But we, we are small but mighty, and we will continue to be successful. And we have a great community around us, and so I'll just leave it there.
Questions?
How are you doing on enrollment?
Great. We are thirty up from our budgeted number. So, yeah, we've, we've grown a little bit this year.
You mentioned regionalization. Can you explain that a little better?
So some of the districts in the state, they get, they get like, let's say, twelve percent more in funding because they live in areas that their homes or their values are more than ours. And so they, they get that money, and it's just a, I think it's a dartboard that legislators look at, and they throw it, and they go, yep, that's my area. So guess what? My people get that money. I'm joking, but it just seems that way that it's not really, because there's no logic to it at all. And so, and it's frustrating when my teachers are making twelve percent less, but yet they still come into negotiations and want that twelve percent, and I don't have that. And so that's the frustrating, trying to keep quality teachers in our area compared to some of these other areas that can pay them more. So, thank you.
All right. So I'm Jennifer Bethman. I'm from Rochester School District. And similar to what you just heard about Rainier, we are also, we don't, we don't get regionalization. So that's something we're working through as well. But we are in a situation where we are doing budget reductions. So with the loss of ESER funds and the loss of the timber funds that came, basically that we were stopped receiving in the two thousand and twenty-one school year, we have serious budget reductions that we're doing. We reduced our budget by three percent last year, and we are reducing it by five percent this year. So, and that's just to be able to create a balanced budget for next year. These are, you know, we're reducing things that students, that we need to help our kids. Health clerks being in our health room. So when kids come down with a, you know, a headache during the day, somebody's there to take care of them and get them back to class as soon as possible, or get them home wherever they need to be, right? Just with some other examples of things that we'll be reducing, teachers. And some of those were paid for by ESER funds, which we had received additional funds due to COVID. And now we need to back off with that, which, you know, understand that we still have needs though. After COVID, our kids are still struggling. We have the most un, non, the kids aren't ready for kindergarten. They come in and they are struggling a lot more being ready for school than they ever were before COVID. And part of that is because parents are at home and they're trying to work from home, and they're doing their best, right? But they're, our kids just aren't coming to school with the same readiness that we used to see before COVID. And so the needs are much greater that we have with our, with our kiddos. And we, we think eventually we'll get back to where we were, but we are still living the effects of COVID. So that's a piece. The timber funds that I talked about ending in two thousand and twenty-one, or yes, two thousand and twenty-one. Prior to that, we would get about a million dollars in timber funds over a four-year period. And I think you guys know about where we are with the timber sales now, and that's just completely stopped. That was a nice additional pool of money for our community, and we've had to learn how to live without that now. The strategic plan, we are actually going into a strategic planning phase this spring. So we're going to be working on that, excited to bring the community together. I'm a believer that we need to bring our community together whenever we're doing things. So with the budget reductions, I've had a task force that's, has stakeholders on the task force that are representing everybody, all the way down to our kids, sitting at the table to decide and have conversation about what we're going to reduce, teachers, classified custodians, our community members, people who don't have kids in the school, people who have students in the school. So everybody's sitting down and having conversations. I think that's really important. We'll do the same thing when we develop our, our strategic plan, bring a task force of people together that represent all the different stakeholders. The other thing is, we were very fortunate to pass our levy. We have a community that really supports us. We had over sixty percent of our community pass the E P and O levy, which was absolutely wonderful. And it, it really is a strong message for us that our community really does support us because we know these are, you know, there's some financial hardship that our communities are dealing with, but they believe in the schools and our, and what we're doing for our kids. Our bond, we did have a bond on the ballot as well. That bond would, would have provided security improvements in all of our buildings. And then it would have replaced an aging high school that was built thirty-five years ago and was built, you know, on a low-budget type of, a time period when it was, they received a bond and they had matching money from the states, but they really did it on a low-budget bill. The building was built for four hundred and fifty students. We now have over six hundred students there. We have more classrooms outside of the building than we do inside the building. We have seven stalls, bathroom stalls for the girls. That's just an example. I can tell you how many we have for the boys as well, but if you can imagine over six hundred students, and we only have seven stalls for the girls. And there's no stalls for the girls out in the portables or the boys. So all the bathrooms are inside, and they have to come in. So that's just an example of some of the struggles that we have with our existing high school. Our community, I, over fifty, well, over fifty percent, fifty-three percent of the community said yes to the bond, but the bond requires sixty percent passage. And so we're going to do some work. We're going to go back out, survey the community, find out what the, you know, where those who said they couldn't approve it at this point, why that is, and ask some questions and then figure out how to move forward with that. I will also say that the bond also included things like covered play areas. Our elementaries don't have covered play areas. The most elementaries do these days. And boy, when I was talking to the kids and parents about the covered play areas, the little kids, one of them specifically stopped me and said, "That right there means we can go outside and play on rainy days?" Yep. Mom, vote for that. You know, I mean, that was really important for our kids. So that and the safety pieces of having a barrier for people just walking straight into our buildings is really, really important. I would say the last thing that I want to mention is just our facilities for people in Rochester's community to actually access, especially our athletic facilities, our tracks and things like that, all very dated and aging, and just not a lot of resources for our community. Our young kids who are playing on the Little League teams and the junior footballs, teams and things, we, our football fields are in such poor condition that the kids can't even play on our fields in the community. They have to go to Tom Water. They need to go to Tenino because we, our fields need to be constantly in the, in maintenance. We're really struggling with moles and the water system and things like that. So continually looking for ways that we can make sure that we have facilities available for our community to use and places for them to stay active, engaged in, you know, physical, physical activities, which is what we want our kids doing. So that's what I have to share.
Questions?
I have a question. So last year in the report, you said there was an increase in the Latina population. And I'm wondering how that's, how that's going now. Has there been an increase? Where are you at, especially with the, you know, resources and kind of just hearing this information out?
We still have just thirty percent Hispanic Latino families, and thirteen percent of our Hispanic, or primarily Spanish-speaking families, families who are English as a second language in our community now. So it's not, it didn't increase this year too much. I think just about half a percent on our Hispanic family in the enrollment. And I don't think we saw an increase in the E L students.
And as a follow-up to that, as you're saying, you know, kids who are coming into elementary school, they don't have, is it majorly the Latina population who is coming in who don't have access maybe to preschool programs or?
So I would say it's not just our Hispanic Latino families. It is our low-income families is, is a common thread there. So yes, it often is access to programs. We do offer a preschool for our students with special need. And then we also offer the TK program for four-year-olds. And we work with our local daycare, childcare agencies to make sure that, you know, we are sharing the wealth of those programs. But we do have some early childhood programs for kids. Good questions.
How are you doing on enrollment?
We are up thirty students from last year. So increased just a little bit.
Are you going back out right away for your bond issue?
We are not going out in April. We're taking time to, to step back and kind of work with our community, find, ask some questions, do a survey, and then we will be going back out. Maybe November, maybe next February. Still working to figure that one out. Do you want to come down and go, "Do I order an arm with me?"
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll help where I can.
Okay, I'll let you know.
I was able to see the presentation of your robotics students, and I just wanted to, and that was incredible. And, I mean, the story, not only their success, but the adversity and like they had their stuff stolen, and they were able to recreate the project and still like win this national award. It was pretty inspiring.
Yes, and I should celebrate that. Yes, so I'm really glad that you were able to hear that. That robotics team has five in the region of the robotics team. The first five places in robotics were all from Rochester this year. And drones, which is in the second year of competition, they've, it's even been a competition. The first three teams, so first, second, and third place were all Rochester students, and they all go to state in April. So they're on their way again to hopefully go to state again. But those, those kids that you heard in the presentation, both of those teams, the robotics and the drones, came in first place. So they're moving on to state competition now.
Congratulations. That's great.
Thank you.
You, you mentioned the COVID issue with, and I take broadband, we had played into that to a degree. How are you folks as a community doing on broadband?
Pretty good. There are, we do still have some outreach in areas. I can't think of the name of, in our southwest region of our district where we have some trouble with broadband. And then up in the Gates community, there's still some problems with, with it. But for the most part, we're okay. We've been accessing some grants. That is a place where we've been able to access some grants to get some different types of connection for them. But it is a struggle in the out, in, you know, far outlying areas, especially as you move west. I'm sorry, did I say south, east? It's southwest.
I have a question. How many families are accessing like the E C A P program in your area?
So we do have an E C A P program. It's run by the E S D.
Okay.
I don't know the numbers. I think there's about thirty students that are in that program, but I don't, I don't know that off the top of my head.
Okay. Thank you.
What is that? I don't know from anything.
E C A P, state-funded.
Yeah, early, early childhood program.
It's, it's for families who are living in poverty. Well, hello. Deb Clemens, Superintendent for North Thurston Public Schools. I visited with you earlier this year prior to us running our capital levy and E P and O levy, and we're grateful that our community supported both ballot measures. The E P and O levy is short for educational programs and operations. So basically, having that replaced means we continue to provide the same level of services that we have been providing students. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time talking about that ballot measure, but I do want to share more about the capital levy because that was a new tax that we were asking the community to support. And the key projects that are funded through the capital levy include safety upgrades at our schools, technology refresh. So we're a one-to-one school district. We provide a Chromebook to every student, and we have to refresh or replace those Chromebooks when they reach the end of their life cycle. Also ensuring that we have high-speed access to the internet anywhere in our schools requires the upgrading of our systems, including our wireless access points because a Chromebook really isn't any good without access to the internet. So technology, a lot of that is just the day-to-day operations of what our teachers and students need and refreshing equipment such as, you know, large screens for display and interactive screens in the classroom. We also are doing some facility improvements, which will include some parking lots, significant parking lot improvements, sewer system upgrades connecting to city sewer in some cases, as well as separating parent drop-off and bus traffic to keep our, our schools safer during those very busy times of the school day. A big part of the capital levy was funding the preschool expansion. So I did provide a website page that maybe we could pull up. When we were here a year ago, we talked about the concept of a young childhood family center. This project is a partnership project between the school district, the City of Lacey, the Y M C A, the Timberland Regional Library, the E D C, and the Thurston Chamber. Last year during the legislative session, we secured a million dollars of funding from the Department of Commerce to do the conceptual design of this project. And so we have hired McGrannahan Architectural Firm to begin that work. And the capital levy was our request to the community to be able to fund the preschool classrooms that are part of this project. So the, this, this project, if you scroll down a little bit, you may recall this brochure. We distributed that last year. So this brochure was produced by the Y. And basically, we have partnered for a number of years with different organizations to expand childcare and expand access to early learning opportunities within our community because our, within North Thurston Public Schools, we've been identified as a childcare desert. There's not enough opportunity for families to have access to affordable childcare. And so what this brochure lays out is that we not only need to meet the academic and social emotional needs of, of children and families within our community, we also need to meet some physical needs for children and families. And in this climate, as Jennifer talked about, with it being super rainy during certain times of the year, children need access to indoor play spaces. This project would include a swimming pool that's designed specifically for young children. So you may know that there are a number of children every year that die from drowning and that they do not have access to swim lessons. So this is really meeting the needs of young children and their families at one location and partnering with lots of different community partners to provide services similar to what North Thurston Public Schools has done with the Family and Youth Resource Center. So we provide support through the Family and Youth Resource Center to families who are living in poverty and children who are homeless. And donations from the community come in, and, and the district is really just the vehicle to provide those resources to the families. We're not funding that part of it. And through partners with like Multi-Care and other organizations, they deliver services to the, to the families using our facility. This would be that same idea, is all of those community-based partnerships that we have, whether it's South Sound Reading Foundation or other nonprofits, they would be able to deliver services at this location through agreements. But the focus is really, I mean, there, there are other fitness centers that people can pay for and become members. This focus is really those, those very young children and their families. So we're super excited to be able to begin to go after other funds for our partner organizations to be able to fund their parts of this project. Because with the capital levy, we were crystal clear. We didn't even show the pictures that are in this particular brochure. If you click down or click on it, it shows the swimming pool and shows all that. We're crystal clear. We're really, as a school district, funding the classrooms to provide services. And you may know, or you may have read an article recently about our partnership with the Bezos Academy. We are bringing sixty slots of completely free preschool programming year-round. It's going to be located at Seven Oaks Elementary School. We have a partnership with Capital Forest Preschool where they use our facility, and they provide preschool programming for parents who choose to be a significant partner in their education of their children. So they come in and volunteer in the classroom and, and engage in parent education. We're a partner with the E S D for our E C A P program, and we're also a partner around Head Start. So this facility would provide us the space to continue to expand those partnerships to be able to serve even more children because our elementary school- Because our elementary schools are at capacity, so we don't, we don't, every, when we have an available classroom, we've been expanding our future-ready kindergarten program, which is the same as what Rochester has been doing, and that is enrolling students who are not yet kindergarten age and are currently not served anywhere in the community. So we, we have private preschool providers, and we have partnerships to serve children who are living in poverty, and then we have other children that still don't have access. And those are the children that we're serving in our future-ready kindergarten program. Our program is a partial-year program, so next year, beginning this fall, we plan to start it in November. And we do very intentional recruitment of families. So if a family is currently served in E-CAP, or they're currently served by another provider, we do not enroll them. We're really trying to pass that net out and serve more children. So this is pretty exciting that the capital levy is, is funding the preschool classroom part of this facility, as well as some of the common spaces. So we're partnering, I mentioned, with Timberland Regional Library. They would be able to serve, so the location for this is near Niskwali Middle School. So it used to be the Bucknell softball fields or baseball fields. That's the location where the Young Child and Family Center will be housed. I also wanted to mention, just as a, as a school district, we're continuing to expand our dual-language program. We started at Lydia Hawk Elementary School with kindergarteners in 2020. They will be fourth graders next year. And we started at Mountain View with kindergarteners this year, and we'll be expanding to another elementary school this fall.
All right. Is JBLM helping you on this endeavor?
We are in conversation with them. There are, so our partners, so the Y, the city, and other nonprofits, will need to secure funding for the other parts of this project. And we've been in conversation with JBLM because there are some federal dollars. They wouldn't necessarily go to the school district, they'd go to one of the partner organizations. But they are, there are some funds that are available, that are very competitive. But this project is perfect for those kinds of funds because it really is a, a lot of partners coming together to meet a need in the community.
Is our local Congresswoman up there involved with you on?
Yeah, Marilyn Strickland's office is involved with this project, as is, so we did requests last year, and of course, they get way more requests than they're able to fund. And we will, again, make requests this year as for the partners.
Meeting with those folks from Fort Lewis for years, this is, this will really fill a void for them.
Yeah, I think-
And I would think they could team up with Marilyn and really get you some funding to-
There is some federal funding that is perfect for a project like this. One of the challenges that JBLM has is they actually have facilities on-site that they would like to renovate and expand for childcare services on-site. I think, so they have, they have some needs right on the base that they also have prioritized, but I think there are some other funding sources that, that would support-
How's your enrollment doing?
We're doing fine. Our, we have a lot, as you know, a lot of housing developments in North Hurston Public Schools that are pretty much high-density housing. And we anticipate our enrollment to be relatively flat, you know, a little bit of growth, but we have more students accessing Running Start, and so that's a, a benefit to students, and we certainly see that, that might be the right career pathway for some of our students. So as our enrollment grows at the elementary level, we're serving those students, but they're not on our campus as much. So it kind of is, is more flat then.
You guys can ask questions too, if you have.
We, we know Deb well.
Okay. Sure, go ahead.
Chris Woods, Superintendent of Yelm Community Schools. Well, a lot going on in, in Yelm right now. We are growing. We are about two hundred students above where we were last year. Many of them full-time students, some of them part-time students, doing Running Start, New Market, or the Extension Program. We did not pass our levy here recently, and our board last week approved a resolution to go out again in April, April twenty-third. We ran our levy at two dollars and fifty cents per thousand dollars of assessed value. We got just about forty-seven percent approval, not enough to pass at fifty. Our board made the decision to decrease that to two dollars and twenty-five cents per thousand dollars of assessed value. So we're going to be doing some work in our community. We've got a very supportive community, but it's also a community that I think holds our schools accountable. And through this process, I think we've learned a lot. We had tremendous challenges with transportation this fall, shortage of staff, and that makes it really hard for the community. It makes it very hard for our families who have parents in the military and have to get to work early, and others who have to go to work and, and without transportation. That makes it very, very difficult. And so I think that was one of the things that, that our community was disappointed with, was our, our challenges there. We've done a lot of work, and I think we're in a good place now. I think the other thing that our community really wants to know is how are we currently spending our levy dollars? I think everybody is in, in a difficult place of having to pay more for a lot of things. And so they're really wanting to know, where are my dollars going? And so one of the things that we're doing is, is having conversations with our community about how those levy dollars are spent. And what I think a lot of people don't understand is that our levy dollars are about thirteen percent of our revenue in our district. And so that is a lot of staff, athletics, activities, extracurricular activities, all of those things that are not funded by state dollars. And so we've grown accustomed to having those things, having the arts, having the activities, having the athletics and the academics, all at a very high level. And our levy dollars are vital to make that happen. And so we are scheduling a series of community forums to go out and meet with our community to find out what questions they have, what concerns they have, and how we can help them understand how our district is currently spending levy dollars and how we would continue to do that. So that's a big part of what we're doing. On top of, I think all of us, even with passing levies, are looking at budget cuts with the shortfall of, of funding, and we don't see that changing at the end of this session much. I think we're all looking at ways of how do we continue to provide a very high-level program at a reduced cost? And it's getting increasingly challenging to do that, even with our voters approving our levies. And so for us, right now, it's really going to be about, you know, kind of looking in the mirror and seeing, what do we need to do different and better so that we have the trust of our community? You know, I kept telling our, our board and our staff, if we would have passed our levy at fifty-one forty-nine, we would have been thrilled and would have moved on, and we probably wouldn't have spent much time asking the forty-nine percent why they didn't approve. And so I think this really is a blessing for our community because we're forced to go out and ask some, some difficult questions and be transparent and, and be willing to listen to those thoughts and ideas and constructive criticism. And so I think in the long run, it's going to be really good for our community, to take a good, hard look at what we're doing and why. And I feel really good about the possibility of, of passing the levy on April twenty-third. We've already had a significant number of people come forward and saying, we want to help, we want to be part of this, and we want to help get this passed. And so, again, we have an amazing community, very supportive, and very high expectations, which is also good. And so I think those two things combined are going to set us up for success April twenty-third.
I hear a fair amount about that. I don't have to question you.
What's going on? All right. Thank you. Great to meet you.
Things are absolutely great in Tenino. That's a true story. You know, for, first of all, I'd really like to thank the board for having us here today. It's a great opportunity to share things that are going on, and I'd also like to extend a personal thank you to the commissioners who showed up during our Supreme Living fiasco in Tenino where there was the attempt to open a home for serious offenders within our boundaries. And I appreciate the commissioners that stepped in to actively help us navigate that and ultimately end up putting a stop to that project. So thank you for that. Super excited that Commissioner Fornier is on board. But again, I feel like we had great support from the board as it was in Tenino. I don't ever feel like we're left out of things. I frequently see board members within our district, and I very much appreciate that support. Our enrollment is down, but not significantly, down just enough to keep our pencils very sharp, make sure that we're staffing appropriately. It's a much better place to be where you're growing regularly so you can expand programs. Whenever you make reductions, no matter where they're at, that's very difficult. Number of my colleagues have already touched on the budget issues that we're all facing. So the state, at one point, as an overall percentage of the state budget that went to schools was roughly fifty percent, little over, and now it's down to around forty-four percent. And our costs are not going down. Recently, we, most of us experienced extreme increases in our insurance costs. We don't have a lot of options. We don't get to call GEICO or shop around. There's just a handful of places that do school insurance, and for, for Tenino, I think our insurance bill went up a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for one year's premium. That's significant for us. I think most districts faced some version of that increase. And so continuing to try and do more with less is a challenge, but it's one that I think we've navigated very well. Because again, our community, our families expect a level of expectation, a level of education that we want to be able to provide. And again, we're grateful that we passed our EP and O, but that just keeps us from really going backwards. It's just maintaining programs that we have, but we're not in a space where we're able to build on some of the things that we would like to be able to build on. Despite all that, like I said, things are great in Tenino. So VFW Teacher of the Year is the Tenino High School teacher, Geraldine Maxfield. Recently, our ESD Teacher of the Year was Holly Johnson, one of our kindergarten teachers at Parkside. We've got, we're sending kids to state for welding. Our first-place regional was a young lady by the name of Leah Knoll. She's pretty excited, she's a very skilled welder, looking forward to seeing what she's going to be able to do. We apply for grants all the time, and one of the grants that we recently received was from RCO, Recreational Conservation Organization, to help us create some additional public space. So we have a, a chunk of land that has been used as a, I want to say landfill, but for any time that we've got debris or trees, we park it out in this one little field. So they're working with us to figure out how we can make that a usable, playable field. So we're looking forward to that. I'm not entirely present here today, I'm sorry. My boys are in Yakima playing basketball right now. At the Sun Dome for state basketball, so if I check my phone, it's just to see what the score is, what the upbeat's on. Again, super grateful for the support that we get in Tenino from the board, and thank you again for having us here today. Questions?
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good old Beavers.
I'd like to echo Clint. Thank you for receiving us and hosting this. Always great to talk to the commissioners. Things are, there's a lot of really good things happening in the Olympical District. You know, most recently, our, our most recent graduating class of twenty-twenty-three had the highest graduation rate we've had pretty much ever. Ninety-two percent on-time graduation rate, ninety-six percent almost with an extended graduation rate. We have graduating classes of seven to eight hundred students. When you got numbers like ninety-six percent, I think a hundred percent goals are actually realistic. I think that's all of our goals, to get to one hundred percent. You don't want any child left behind, as the law says. And we are actually doing those types of things. There were some severe limitations to this survey that kind of ranked schools in the area that was recently put out in the Olympian, but there's a lot of really good stuff in there. It talks about how the Olympia School District is just an outstanding school district in this county and in the state. Highest-rated high schools, highest-rated middle schools, highest-rated elementary schools. We've got amazing staff, incredible parents and incredible kids, some that I got to interview just recently at Olympia High School with their senior resumes. And every time I worry about future, I just go to our high schools and talk to our kids and say, we're in good hands, because they're amazing students. And our staff and our families are doing this in the midst of everything that everybody's been talking about, trying to recover from COVID, funding problems, and in our instance, a pretty significant drop in enrollment. And that's not unique to Olympia, might be unique around this table, but if you read the papers, it's a national and regional and state phenomenon. Millennials and Generations Eve, folks are not having kids at the same length, same numbers as this generation, previous generations. You couple that with the expensive housing in Olympia, and if there are new families, it's really hard for them to come to Olympia, which is ironic because we're the most expensive place to live in the region. As Superintendent Barr said, that's what's supposed to drive regionalization, and we didn't get it again. Our Thurston lost it, Yelm got it, and Olympia, which is the most expensive place, place to live, didn't get it. So Brian was joking about his dartboard, but it's not that much of a joke. So that's frustrating. Since two thousand nineteen twenty, when we were around almost over ten thousand students in terms of head count, we've lost over seven hundred kids. We're down about twelve percent in elementary. Our largest decline is in the youngest primary grades. When I arrived here seven years ago as superintendent, we had kindergarten classes of seven hundred. The last three years, they've been about five fifty, five sixty. If you've got small kindergarten classes coming in, large senior classes going out, the entire system shrinks, and it works its way up through the system. So we're not feeling it in middle school and high school right now. We're cautiously optimistic about some of the things happening during this short legislative session, but again, I would say that is, you know, just a little bit of help. We have the largest percentage of special education students in our district than I think any district in Thurston County. So changing the cap and things like that that could come out of this will be helpful. But we have a, an enrollment problem, and we are having some really hard conversations that many of you are probably aware of in the Olympical District right now around the number of schools that we have serving the number of kids that we have. We brought in some folks that we hired as consultants to come in and do a longer-term projection of how we think enrollment is going to go, and they don't see it getting better. They see us losing probably about another thousand kids in the next ten years. And I know that when you have a projection like that, the further out you go, it loses its reliability the further away. But there are certain things that you can look at that aren't projections, they're not wonderings, they're actualities. And that is the birth rates that we get from Thurston County Health Department. And if you look at the birth rates of moms that had kids in the Olympia School District, we know how many kids were born four years ago. That correlates with next year's kindergarten class. We know how many were born three years ago. That correlates two years from now with the next kindergarten class. And those numbers are low. They're low. So if there's not some sort of immigration or an infusion of new folks moving into the area, which is happening in some of these places, I would probably guess that some of these places where enrollment's going up, it's not necessarily that the birth rates are up, it's people are moving there because they can afford a single-family home in that area that they can't in Olympia. So we have had some, two schools identified for potential closure and consolidation, and they are wonderful, wonderful elementary schools. Madison Elementary School and McKinney Elementary School. Madison Elementary School and McKinney Elementary School. Madison has an enrollment of about a hundred and ninety-five kids. It can hold about three hundred. McKinney has an enrollment of about two hundred and seventy kids, and it can hold five hundred and twenty. And they're both next to schools that we invested tens of millions of dollars in to expand because old projections were going to go up, and those schools are pretty significantly under enrollment. So, that's the really hard conversation. We had a hearing on Monday night. We were there for almost five hours, listened to almost a hundred public comments, um, and listened to people say really powerful, strong feelings about how much they love their neighborhood school. And I would never argue with them about it because I believe them. Because I walked those schools all the time, and I put my child in those schools in a heartbeat. It's not about how good the school is. It's about enrollment. It's about facility. It's about capacity. It's about utilization, and it's about our budget. So, uh, we've had wonderful community support, um, in terms of helping with the legislative session, helping with our levy. Our levy passed at almost seventy percent. We're very fortunate in the Olympia School District. People highly value strong community schools. They know how important it is to the overall value of the community. So, um, feel very fortunate about that, um, and really appreciate our, our community as a, uh, as we wrestle through this, this problem moving forward. And all that being said, I'll start with what I started with. There's great things happening in the Olympia School District every day. It's a wonderful place to go to school. It's a wonderful place to work, and it's a wonderful place to serve.
The levy passing by that percentage with the demographics that you described, that just shows an incredible, you know, trust, the community, the district, and so I mean, that's a positive.
It's positive, very much.
Commitment.
Through another positive, as an Olympia School District parent, um, I've been incredibly thankful for the Olympia School District and the support that they've given my daughter. After COVID, you know, and having that transition to an online school and then having, um, her come back and being behind, the support, uh, that the school district as well as the teachers have given her have been absolutely immeasurable. And, um, I know it's not just my daughter. I know several parents, you know, were going through the same situation, especially as it was her kindergarten year when COVID happened. So, she really never had a full school year until third grade. And she mentioned, she's like, oh, this is the first year of, I'm going to school all year. So, there's just that huge impact. And I think, um, you know, that, of course, affected kids all around the region, but, um, just, I guess, on a, on a positive. I know, um, I'm incredible, incredibly thankful for the Olympia School District and the support that they've given my child.
Thank you for, for sharing that, and, um, we are blessed with amazing staff and educators in our schools. And that's, that's an expectation, you know, that, that people have, and those two schools that I mentioned have kids that went through the same experience as your daughter, and so they're really worried too that if they have to go to a new school next year, is that just another tough transition that they're going to have to go through? And I think those are all legitimate things for us to consider and think about as we go through this. But I think that's another big part of this is that, um, in Olympia, in all of our school districts, I say this all the time in Thurston County, there's, there's really high expectations about the quality of service that we provide for our families and our students. And in order to do that, you have to hire really good people, and you have to hire enough of them. And eighty-five cents of every dollar that we spend is people, and when we're all struggling with these budget situations, whether they're enrollment-driven or regionalization-driven or whatever it is, trying to compete with those that have more, um, it makes it hard to keep up that expectation and meet that expectation when we have to look at possible reductions. And that's a common thread that you're hearing, not just in this county, but across the state right now. So, thank you for sharing that because that's what we're continuing to try to do in the midst of some really challenging things.
Since I'm meeting some of you for the first time, I, I have to share the fact that my, both my parents were teachers, and they divorced when I was two and remarried to other teachers. And I was an only child raised in two households with four teachers. And I had a little reprieve, and now my wife's a teacher and her mom's a teacher. So, I've spent my whole life hearing about you guys and what you do and what's going on in the schools. It's just like part of my DNA to kind of hear about this. So, anyway. But yeah, so it's tough stuff, and my wife's a teacher in the Olympia School District, so I hear about it a lot. That's why I'm not asking a lot of questions. Tom Water.
Well, I'm Kevin Bogutzun, this, uh, new superintendent in Tom Water, and I don't know, maybe fitting that I go last of this group. Because it feels like a year of new and year of learning, learning from this group, learning from you, um, because I'm not only new, new to Tom Water, I'm new to this county, I'm new to Washington, um, and so I'm just like learning new every day. If I listen to these guys and I'm just like, all these things that I'm picking up about their districts and about our state, I'm learning this. And like I was asking before this meeting started, like, how big is our county? Like, I, I'm still like, and I know you guys, I just maybe take that for granted. Like, I am like, just every day, like, there's new things that I am learning about. Do you know what I mean? County, like, so not too far away. I, I came from Oregon, um, spent my career, um, I, I grew up in the Midwest, graduated from, um, University of Northern Iowa. So, I was kind of Midwest-born and raised. Um, did student teaching in Lake Oswego and started my teaching career as a second-grade teacher in Oregon. So, since nineteen ninety-five, kind of did my little stint. Um, I was most recently a superintendent, uh, North Bend Cus Bay, uh, so south coast of Oregon. And so, last four years. So, my fifth year as a superintendent, new to Tom Water, love Tom Water, love this county, love this area, beautiful. Have a great team. So, lots of positive things that I can say. And, um, there's our challenges. That comes with any, any school district. I'll echo, you know, we just passed, uh, our EPNO, uh, about fifty-eight percent. A little bit lower than normal than, than I think historically that we've passed that, uh, as I look back and looked at that. But again, it's a, it's a, it's a tough time. You know, I think if you look at just the increasing costs, housing costs, uh, inflation, it is not cheap to live right now. And so I think we've, everyone's feeling that pressure, and I'm sure that's making a decision whether you're feeling in that. And so, you know, we're faced, uh, with a future bond and a conversation of when do you do that? And, um, because we are experiencing some growth. It's kind of slow. I'd say we're kind of in that, that North Thurston. There's development going on. There's, uh, plans to build seven thousand single-family homes in, in Tom Water, um, over the next five, ten, who, like, as we speak, they're building houses. So, we have some growth that's happening. Um, it just seems like slow. Our enrollment is a little bit up from budgeting. We actually closed, uh, an online school. So, we kind of out of the pandemic, seems like every district in this, in the country opened up an online school. Like, we all were sort of scrambling to figure out how to serve kids, and so we all started online schools. As, as kids have all come back to schools, or most, a lot of them have, um, you try to decide, should every district now have online? And I, I think a lot of us, if you're not doing this well, should we have it? And I think Tom Water, before I came, decided, hey, this is not our wheelhouse. We're not doing this awesome. Let other people do that, and let's focus our attention on what we do well. We have the skill center in Tom Water. We have, uh, we're trying to develop and build an alternative learning opportunity that's in-person, so let's focus our attention there. And so we've recovered enrollments. We're down a couple hundred as they develop that. We're back to our enrollment where we ended last year. So, kind of studying growth, which is good to see. Um, it just makes for, you know, we're not talking about budget reduction, just kind of talking about flat, flat growth. And, um, I would love to be having conversations with our administrative team around it. Where can we invest? Where can we grow? Where can we meet some needs? Because that's, there is some struggles. You know, transportation is a struggle for us. Um, it's a negative kind of cloud over most of our districts around that. Like, we have just about, I'd say, I haven't gone a week this year where kids have gotten to school on time. And so that's something that, you know, weighs heavy on me, that we, we go every day where, um, kids are either arriving late or not getting home on time, every single day. And so that's a problem to fix, and we'll, uh, we're going to probably, you know, looking at trying to kind of pool some resources and figure out how to do that because ultimately money is going to be what we're going to have to do to resolve this. We have been looking at efficiencies and, but there are not easy solutions. And I think if there was, we'd all be doing that. Um, I'd say the other, the other area, and again, I guess I bring up transportation. And again, maybe there are regionals, like I think at a, at a county level. Um, I have a high school that doesn't have access to our public transit system. So, I, I mean, I see such great access to that. Um, and I have kids at Tom Water High School, being able to access that when the bus doesn't come for them at the end of the day, that's a school that they all somehow find a way home. My other high school, the other end of town that doesn't get served, um, by our local transit system, they're struggling. And so we have a group that, um, you know, ends up waiting an hour, two hours, um, to get home, um, before even the bus will arrive. So, there's some of those challenges that we're facing. I'd say the other piece that, you know, coming in new into this area, so many awesome things, but I would say that we probably, this group would probably echo this is, look at like behavior, behavior and mental health challenges. Um, there was a, a regional support. Northwest Soil was a behavioral program here, I think, so, in Olympia, is serving our whole region, closed, won't take any additional kids. I have, I have staff members traveling to Texas to try to, to do some intake and see if, um, a place that will be able to serve a child. Like, that should not be happening. That, that's like, I have to, like, that's what we're going to end up doing, uh, to, to serve a student. Like, I'm going to be, I'm only paying to, that, anyway, I, I, we want to serve. It's not like I want to send them to Texas to be served. I want to serve them here. There is no place to serve them. And I have every, every school has kids that are really struggling, kind of just to, to manage day-to-day mental health behavior, and there's just no access, and there's just no places to have that. And so I see that as a huge barrier for them to access their education, to be successful in schools. Our teachers are clamoring for help. I sat with a teacher a couple weeks ago who, a child's having a meltdown, kind of intervening. She just got beat up by this kid, um, and trying to call for help and, you know, kind of there's this delay before that happened. And just wanted to tell me this story, and this, you know, young elementary-age kid and just the struggle of wanting to, you know, keep calm and have her kids just, but they, they see this trauma and they see their teacher getting hurt by this kid, and, um, and then welcoming the student back and, but how, how do we see and how do we support our teachers that, that shouldn't be the expectation that happens very frequently? Or at all? And, and so how do I help make sure? Because this is one of our best teachers, and so I need her to stay. Like, if we want academic outcomes, I know she's really, really good, and they need to stay within our system. They cannot be leaving. Those are the people that we know we have to keep if we want to improve academic outcomes. So, those are struggles and challenges that it's like I look at, that is a regional, it is a, it is a community issue for us. It is not just school district. Because it is like, I'm not sure, when you're struggling mental health, you're struggling with those kinds of issues, I, I don't know what we're able to do. Like, I need help from other partners in this area and around the community to, to help us navigate that, to help us solve that, to find resources, to find places, just so we can serve kids. I, I'm not looking to, to send them away. I'm not looking to give them away. I just want them to get help. They are, they are struggling. The teachers are struggling. The kids are not being served. They're just, um, they're, they're like seeking help. And so, uh, that's probably one of the biggest things that probably weighs on me. Um, I would say there's a lot of, there's a lot of great things going on. I have a board that's, uh, ready to focus on academics and looking at setting goals and strategic planning, and, you know, I think, uh, we're all probably tired post-pandemic, kind of all the, you know. And there, there's aspects of that that we see the results of that, and now we're saying, all right, well, now what are you doing to help improve outcomes? And so where are some investments? And again, I think that's what we wish we were looking to the state to see is, man, it'd be great to see just a little bit of resources, money coming in so that we can look at some of these deficits and academic deficits of what can we do that's a little bit different, a little bit unique, professional development, get back to some of the things that we know work. We need time. Our teachers need to just be kind of uplifted, re-energized, like, of, of skills and strategies that we know work. And not that they've, they were taught, they sometimes just kind of forget. They lose their way, and we, we need some of those professional development to kind of get us back on track. Maybe some materials, resources to help us kind of steer us back in the right pathway, because we know we have the, the folks here, um, in our systems highly capable to get us and have, um, high outcomes. We have high graduation rates. And again, the focus is on who isn't making it and what pathway do we have for every single kid to find, uh, success post-high school, whether that be into the trades, into workforce, into post-secondary education, whether it be in our community college or four-year universities. There is a pathway for every kid. Um, our trade center is as successful as it's ever been. Um, it's almost at capacity, super successful, lots of positive things. I said, I couldn't be happier to be here. I'm sorry that I'm in my transition. I haven't really sat down with all of you. So, maybe in the next, uh, before the end of my first year, we can have a chance to sit down in the next, uh, next couple of months. So, I'm, uh, super happy to be here.
Questions for Coach?
Yeah, thanks.
Commissioner Edwards.
On your transit issue, I take that out, out of Black Hills. And, uh, have you worked with our local folks? I mean, we've, we've decided we've got, uh, free bus service in this community.
They quoted me a price.
Why couldn't we just?
They quoted me a million-plus dollars to expand.
We've got people on the transit group.
Yeah, so I think I need some help to get back. Again, we have some, we have some growth going out that direction of housing. I, I feel like it's probably a matter of time. It was like, it's a million-plus dollars to get the route to go out that, just to get there. So, I mean, sooner better than later is what I'm kind of hoping for, um, because it, again, I don't think that solves my problem fully, but it would just help alleviate some of it. But again, it feels like, I guess it just feels like we have the haves and the have-nots, and I just continue to have that. And, and again, our community, if you, if you know Tom Water, you know, again, I kind of have, in a two-high-school town, there's just like, I am learning as the new person in town. Like, there is constantly those two looking at each other around who has what and who doesn't have what. And so I'm trying to, as much level the playing field as much as I can, and transportation is just one another example.
And your mental health issue where you're, you know, those dollars go into Texas for, to serve a need. I mean, we've got a pretty, I think we've got a pretty good system. We've got people here on the board on that one. Maybe, maybe we could look at alternatives as to what those dollars would purchase here locally, because I know other jurisdictions have similar issues. And maybe we could come up with something that, uh, we could try to regionalize.
For sure.
Something. Take care of our own first. Kind of that's, that's kind of where I'm coming from, I guess.
These, they're not cheap problems.
Do you feel any pressure?
No, just.
Commissioner Fornier, I see your hand.
I, I just want to say that, that no, no community south of Tom Water is served by public transit. So, and, and I've tried to bring, bring it up a little bit, and it doesn't really sound like it's a discussion they want to have in the, in the immediate future. But the more, uh, the more pressure from the more, you know, communities and representatives to remind them that there's an entire county, and it'll come a time when they need to consider that. It would be helpful.
I appreciate that.
As the IT rep, I guess I'll, I'll, I'll just say something. It's, InterCity has also been dealing with staffing shortages, and they're just trying right now. Their goal is just to get back to the old routes that they had because those haven't even fully been filled in their old schedule yet. So, uh, we've talked about expansion, but of course, the first priority for the transit agency is to just fill back their old schedule. So, I'll just throw in that little tidbit since, uh...
I guess I, I'd be remiss if I didn't say that, you know, for as long as I've been involved with the public, I mean, I, I really do feel kids are thirty percent of our population, but they're a hundred percent of our future, and if we have to prioritize something, I think we should prioritize kids. So, and if that's what it takes, I mean, let's see what we can do.
You raise a lot of issues that interest me, um, Kevin. The mental health issue is something I hear about at home from, from my wife and challenges at her school. So, I'm very interested in what we can do together to try to work on that. InterCity Transit, I mean, we, all of you talked about transportation, and I sat on the board before, um, Commissioner Mihia, and they're not, yeah. I mean, if, if an employer like that with their pay rates and their high-quality employment environment haven't been able to get bus drivers to even restore pre-pandemic, I can only imagine what you guys are facing. Um, so that's really, you know, tough. The thing about the high school, you know, I'm a big growth management, you know, advocate, and this is what, you know, I, when, you know, when I moved to this area in two thousand and seven, I was like, why is there a high school out in the middle? And this is what you get when you build a high school in the middle of nowhere, frankly, is you get a lot of other problems that, that don't, that aren't really easy to solve. InterCity Transit, uh, Commissioner Fornier mentioned, South County, I mean, it's a taxing district. And if the rest of the county wants to pay, you know, for the system, then that's a conversation, but they don't have to pay anything. And, and it, it's even more expensive to expand to places that don't have the ridership and the density. So, I don't know if there's, you know, we have a rural transit system that's not, you know, not what it needs to be for those communities, but that's a tough conversation to, to get solved, um, public transit out, you know, beyond the, the urban core.
But that's a tough conversation to, to get solved, public transit out, you know, beyond the, the urban core. Yeah, I think as soon as, like, there's a, there's a development that's like, I think 2,000-plus homes, it's right directly behind Black Hills High School. I think probably once ground broken on that and streets in and, and houses start being developed, that probably is the, the spark that would probably launch this. And I know there's another, there's another piece of land that the property owner wants to do, like another thousand homes, but the pocket gopher issue has held that up. And now we've got a solution toward that. So that could be, you know, that could area could end up being, you know, what, you know, it could end up all falling into place over time. Yeah, for sure. With those problems being sort of addressed.
I do think InterCity Transit is really a strong partner. And as they get back to, because they're not even, they're maybe, what, 85% once they get back to full service, I think one of the partnerships we're looking at is even for our summer programming. Children can ride the bus for free. And, you know, I'm talking middle school, high school students that can access jobs. And we have to create a culture of people knowing how to access mass transit and do so effectively, and for their parents to have confidence that it's safe. And I feel like with their new general manager, they're really looking to, you know, serve all of, all of the districts with education.
It's very much a culture thing. If you run into someone that grew up in a big city, like they took public transit to, to school, and it, and it was probably way less safe than InterCity Transit. I ride InterCity Transit pretty frequently. And it's way nicer and safer than when I lived in San Francisco and when I lived in Chicago. So, I mean, it's just a cultural thing to get people to understand, you know, that it, that it's safe and that it's, you know, it's a really good option.
I think they're very much a willing partner.
You mentioned that your schools are, something about sewage systems maybe are not all on lot. Is that what I took out of that?
No, we're looking at replacement or connection of existing sewer systems at the time that they reach their end of life. We do have South Bay Elementary School, which is out in the county.
Too far out, I guess.
And that, that particular location, we're limited to any expansion on that site until we upgrade and expand the sewer system there.
Wasn't there a law that just did pass or was being, that would allow a school to be an exception to the, typically in growth management, you can't extend sewer to outside the urban growth area. But a school was going to be an exception under at least, there was at least a proposal.
Yeah, I.
It's on the books.
It is. So there is possibility, maybe.
That was the only school that I think we weren't looking at, at connection as the option. So we could certainly be.
Yeah, I mean, maybe it comes.
It just, depending how far away you are, it'd be really super expensive, because you're the only one putting in that infrastructure. There's no cost share.
Yeah, I can't imagine South Bay, I don't, I don't have a map in front of me, but I can't imagine that South Bay's all that far from a lot. They could tightline it.
Probably is when you're doing it by foot.
Yeah. Okay, great.
Philip Purnin, Superintendent of the ESD. Like Kevin, I'm just new to this region, but I've been in Washington State for, I was born and raised in Tacoma, so been a superintendent in different parts of the state, Taquilla and Bremerton. And I think what I appreciate about this region, I'm new to this region, learning it, but you have seven great examples of leaders who are passionate about their schools and communities. There are some consistent challenges that you've heard. And this year, as a educational service district, we've really tried to advance some of those areas, so material supplies and other costs, NSOCs. That, that covers things like utilities and insurance costs. You heard Tenino mention an increase of $120,000. For many districts, their insurance rates went up anywhere between 30 and 50%, which is massive. Same with utility costs. If you read the Seattle Times this morning, they talked about Puget Sound Energy raising costs 18% and 20% over the next two years. The challenge with that is if school districts don't receive the corresponding dollars to meet those increases, then they have to find challenges of still paying those bills, because they don't have an option of not paying the insurance bill or not paying the utility bills. So then they have to look at things like, okay, we've got to reduce programs, or we have challenges with transportation, or all those needs are still there. Students that need special education dollars and services that are in every single district still need to be met, and those costs continue to go up. I think for transportation, there's a funding issue, but there's also just even filling the vacancies of drivers. So in many cases for districts, you have willing partners. We have some really great people trying to solve a lot of these challenges, sometimes in spite of the obstacles. But they can be very creative, as you can see. And I think they really tap into each other and into their communities to get the support and really find some creative ways to do that. You've heard a couple of mentions about what some of you might not even know what an ESD does. But we're an educational service district, so we support school districts in many different ways. We can do that by helping out with things like communications. If they're doing levies or bonds, we can help them with some of the communication strategies. We actually find staffing for some things. We do run a few special education centers that would be similar to Northwest Soil, but not as big. And those are really intensive. So the staffing is sometimes two or three to one for every student. And it's hard to find staff and to keep them. Another topic that you've heard is reference to early learning. The ESD does a lot of that contracting for Head Start and E-CAP, and then we work with school districts. By the way, Rochester has 38 slots. So I pinged our person there and said, how many do we have? So those are, those are really some of those challenges. We sometimes as an ESD provide the service, and in other times, we partner with school districts to help solve their problems and try and advocate at the state level to get that funding that's supposed to correspond to go on with that. So these are the true stars. Obviously, they can give you the best information that they have there, but I really appreciate working with them. We support four other counties too, Mason, Thurston, Mason, Lewis, Grace Harbor, and Pacific County too. So all in total, 44 school districts in five counties.
Give me a good idea. I'm going to send my, my insurance bill to the ESD, to the county, and to the legislature. See what happens.
Yeah.
Don't bother sending it to them. Million bucks, it's like a million dollars. Ours is like a million. It went, it went up, it's like a million dollars over two years.
Ours went up 1.9 and like two years ago, and it's just been proactively. So we feel you on the insurance piece for sure, because when that insurance bill came out, we were all not expecting that.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's just money right out of the classroom, like for us. It's just direct.
There's no other place for it to come.
Yeah, we feel that phenomenon. I mean, there was a perception that we had, you know, well, inflation's up, so the sales tax, we're paying more, so you're getting more sales tax, so you're all good. Our sales tax was flat, but the cost of everything was up. So we had employee contracts to settle and everything else. And it was just, it was really difficult. You know, so we feel that. So one of you mentioned that 50% was before McLeary, or, and then now it's down to 44%. Is that, was that, was that you, 50%?
Yeah.
The 50% was pre-McLeary, or what, what timeframe are you talking about? You said it used to be 50%.
Post-McLeary. Post-McLeary.
And where, and why is that? What's the theory behind why we're down to 44% of the state?
There's a little bit of a belief that there's a little bit of McLeary fatigue at the state level, and kind of education's got what they need, and we've got other problems to solve, transportation, homelessness, fentanyl crisis. And so those are all important things. But as we like to say, state constitution says your paramount duty is public education. So the fact that it used to be 50%, it's now down to 43%. I forget what Superintendent Riedel said, but I think it's something like another billion dollars that would be kept in the public schools if they kept it at 50%. And anytime I hear a state member, I always think 1% for Olympia. If it'd been $10 million in Olympia, it'd solve a lot of our problems right now. So, yeah. And that was post-McLeary. It was up to 50%, I think in what, 1920, 2021, somewhere around there? And it's gone back down to 40, 43%.
When you folks have legislative agendas, I, I wouldn't doubt oftentimes it's pretty similar to what we're doing. So I don't know. I mean, as a board, we've agreed to support different legislative requests through a letter, you know, some endorsement somehow. So I, I think we should keep a line of communication going all the time that can be mutually beneficial.
I think one of the things that we haven't spent a lot of time on, but I think we've all mentioned it a little bit, is social, emotional, and mental health, and how those needs have increased tremendously, and how we were given some additional funding during the pandemic, in large part to try to meet those needs, and also the, the greater needs of bringing kids back, serving kids. Well, then that funding went away, but the need did not. And so all of us are also trying to balance staff in the classroom and staff to support the social, emotional, mental health needs of our students. And even our, our tiniest students are coming in with significant social and emotional needs. And so that's one of the other pieces that we're going to continue to see. There was a mention of special education. Some of that correlates, the social, emotional, mental health needs do correlate to, to special education in some, some cases. But that's a need that's going to continue to rise. And we've seen a, a little bit of help, certainly during the pandemic. But since then, that has, has dropped off. But that's also a need we know with our adults. So I think that's another area where we can collaborate and, and find ways to, to bring awareness.
Yeah, the impact's a real thing. There was a study released from Stanford just recently around, but they did it. They were, the pandemic interrupted a study. They were doing brain research, I think on like 13-year-olds. And so there were a bunch of kids, and they ended up like funneling the research onto this kid, and they came back, and they impacted it. Actually, like, actually the brain has like rewired, and it like physically impacted the brain specifically on the areas of like regulation. And so it's like, they can see it on brain scans, physically altered the brains of our adolescents. And of course, then they make the assumption that it's like, it's impacted all these kids. And so we're, like, it's a physical change that we're now like seeing and having to kind of now, kind of wrestle with for a, for a long period of time that we're all kind of struggling with. And all of us who had kids in the system during this kind of saw it. And so if you, if, if they had some resiliency skills, they had parents who supported them, they may have recovered faster. But we have a lot of kids that don't have that and don't have those supports in place. And so we're going to be, we're going to be dealing with this for a long, a long period of time. It's going to be imperative that we develop supports and resources. I, it is going to be one of those big issues that I'm trying to figure out in this area, like how can I leverage mental health support directly into schools like now?
And there are a lot of things that I think school districts are doing really well. I mean, putting in social, emotional learning curriculum, even with our youngest learners, when they sit in a circle at the beginning of the day, they greet their peers, they talk about how they're feeling, all of those tier-one supports. I mean, those weren't in place 20 years ago. And the school system has taken on really a lion's share of responsibility about teaching our young people how to live in a positive, kind, respectful environment in our schools, day in and day out, and knowing that there are some children that need more help. And the school system is actually a really wonderful way to deliver a service to students, because you don't have to deal with transportation. They're already on-site. In our school system, when we look at where have we had staffing increases, it's all around student support. We have 13 mental health specialists in our district providing direct service to students who have gone through and been identified by the, the professionals, the educators, the counselors that are working with them. We know that the student needs additional support, and when we're able to provide that additional support or connect them with another agency where they can have access to that additional support, it, it makes a huge difference. And it doesn't have to take five years for a student to get well. They, they need the resources and support for that to happen.
And I would add on that we need to be able to offer them in our schools, because our, the mental health services in our public sector are not, they're not available. We can't get it to our kids fast enough. So at least when they're in the schools, we're able to give them what they need right there in the schools and make sure that the, the system is supporting them. We have two mental health counselors, and they are more busy this year than they were last year. And it's, it is not, you know, this is a need that we truly have. And we're teaching, just like Deb said, we're, we're teaching our kids to self-regulate. You know, we're doing the social, emotional curriculum in all of our grade levels. And then part of what we're teaching our young, young kids to do is self-regulate. Where are you? What, you know, let's talk about where you are in your hands and on your, in your brain. We're teaching them about all that type of things, try and help them understand. When I'm not feeling good, or when I'm angry, here's, here's what you need to do. And it's, it's good work. It's really good work. It's kind of sad that that's where we are today, that we need to be doing that with our kids. But we're learning a ton, and I think we're helping all of our kids because of it. But it's, it takes a lot of time and a, and a lot of education, and a lot of additional professional learning for our, our teachers.
Commissioner Kloss?
Yeah, so I have kind of a three-part question that anyone can answer, and a couple of folks have already answered the first part for me. But what are the existing, like, internal mental, mental health supports that you all have? And then like external supports that are existing, maybe with partnerships with outside organizations? And then what are the gaps that still exist where you're like, it would be nice if we had a partnership with some group that could come in and do this for us?
So I, I can share kind of all three under one umbrella. So one of the positive outcomes of COVID was teletherapy. And so what we're accessing in Tenino is creating space for students, because transportation's an issue. Like you, you're going to miss some school if you've got to make it to an appointment. And then that's a barrier for the family to provide the transportation, the student to be out of school. So we've been providing space for students on campus. They don't have to miss a lot of time. Go meet with therapists, doctor, whoever it may be, over the internet, and then they're back in class. So we're seeing some really good success with that. And then internally, we, since coming on at Tenino, we have one counselor at the high school. We now have three counselors, and next year we'll have a counselor in each one of our buildings. So we've been making an investment there. But again, in the face of budget constraints, like I wanted to have four right away, but you can't, you've got to add one, see what happens, add another one, make sure everything works out. But for, for us, that's what we're seeing working and just trying to increase partnerships wherever we can, but remove any barriers to access wherever we can. So again, we've got a great team. Just, I mean, everyone around the table has committed educators who are willing to do whatever it takes. But because of privacy issues, what I have a lot of times is my principals giving up their office so that kids can meet and, and do that, because we know that, that's space that we're able to keep confidence.
We use the acronym MTSS in schools, multi-tiered systems of support, and Deb was kind of speaking to it. Like tier one is like everybody gets it. So I think across all of our school districts, everybody's getting curriculum delivered by trained teachers on how to regulate and deal with social, emotional anxiety and stress to hopefully head off before kids will get to that situation where they need more support. And then tier two might be smaller groups, and that's where a lot of the staff that we're talking about come in, counselors. They've hired mental health folks in North Thurston. We hired, we doubled our social workers in our school district from two to four, which isn't a lot, drove 9,000 kids. And then we hired family liaisons at all of our elementary schools, but we reduced those by a third last year during budget cuts, just to help families in crisis to navigate how to get to those resources in the community. You know, we have special education services. We have psychologists and, and, and different teachers that do lots of things for kids that are struggling with, you know, lots of different things. So you're just kind of working your way up through that system where everybody gets support. Then maybe it's more smaller groups, and then that really individualized, like maybe a kid's homeless, and you got a McKenney-Vento person that's working with that family directly and providing really intense service at that tier-three level. So just, I think we all kind of do that type of thing.
So I'm seeing, I, I don't have the mental health supports in buildings, and so I see that as a gap. And I also am like, I'm running into kind of roadblocks of where that is even accessible for Tumwater, like, so I'm.
We don't either. We partner with DHR and like C Mar and places like that, where they either come into the school or we.
I'm not even finding where that's like, there is a, there is like capacity to expand. Like I'm not like, as I'm kind of throwing out feelers of like, where can we grow this? Like who's available to like come into schools? I'm like, it's just nobody's. I'm like, it's just nobody's sort of in the playing field to like partner with at this particular moment.
Well, there are, so, community youth services, the other organizations that Patrick mentioned, there are a lot of organizations in the community. And when the counselors are working with the student and the family, the family may have access to resources depending on the healthcare provider that they have. So, it is on an individual level that I think we're looking at how to access services beyond what we're able to provide. I do know that there are waiting lists and there are shortages by employers that are trying to hire mental health specialists to provide services. So, it, I mean, that seems to be a little bit of a common theme across whether you're talking intercity transit or these other organizations. So, I know that we often hear from families that have access, that they can't get to service right away.
Thank you. Do, I have a follow-up question on the MTSS piece. Are, are there like outside organizations that you connect with? Like, if there's a specific demographic, like, like houseless youth or like justice-involved youth or other specific demographics that come in and say, hey, we can fill this gap if you have it?
Well, like, like example, with C Mar is more likely to have Spanish-speaking mental health specialists. So, our multilingual specialists will work with families in that regard. I'm not sure about the other two organizations you mentioned, but probably I'd have to talk to our counselors and see if we access those as well. But we're, we're fortunate because we're, we are kind of the urban core in Olympia and so, we are closer to a lot of the things. I know it'd be harder for some of my colleagues around the table to access some of those.
Thank you.
Nothing further. This was awesome. I really appreciate everyone being here. I've done this like my sixth year. I think this is the best conversation and group we've had, so appreciate your time. Final question or comment?
You guys go.
They're lost?
Oh, no.
We appreciate all of you. Thank you very much.
Thanks for having us here. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Well, it's not mine to share, but Dr. Clemens is retiring at the end of the year. So.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Dad, take me with you.
You need an assistant.
Scheduling vacations.
Five-minute break. Five-minute break, she'll just reach out and.
For two days, so she hasn't.
Yeah.
Okay, we're back after a short break. It is three thirty-seven PM. We are picking up with item two on the work session agenda, which is legislative update. And I'm going to turn to Assistant County Manager Gelder.
Thank you. You have the report before you and of course, there are a lot of moving parts at this time in the legislative session. The cutoff from the calendar you have in your packet yesterday, two days, yes, two days ago, was the fiscal committee cutoff in the opposite chamber. And so, we have just a couple of days left before bills need to be able to pass out of the opposite chamber, which will truly be that final cutoff, other than the fiscal bills coming forward. But I just wanted to bring to your attention a couple of things. Since then, none of the bills, as you can see in our bill tracker, related to less restrictive alternatives move forward. But Representative Courtois was able to get a budget amendment passed, which will dedicate a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars of the state general fund to support a position within the special commitment center specifically to focus on communications, providing information, sharing to the public related to conditional release for less restrictive alternatives, which is, is nice in general. I think that will be one to watch as it sort of gets implemented because that will be, the devil is will be in those details. Well, how are they defining it? How does it actually get operationalized? But that will be interesting. We have the WUI, so the Wild Urban, Wild and Urban Interface Bill is currently being held in rules. A lot of things, as we know, this is when sort of the legislative session becomes a little bit more of a spectator sport where there's all these gyrations going on. It is being held there in part because there were some folks upset that there wasn't support in the Senate of the rent stabilization bill. And so, they're kind of, we're pushing that back, but I think they're going to be having their conversations. And I was just exchanging texts with Deborah earlier and it seems like it probably won't be a problem. But one of the things that they are waiting for is a bill report out of appropriations. And so, they can't pull it from rules to the floor until they get that in place. That's the latest on that, but it is still moving. The other thing related to the, the NCS or the proviso, the twenty-five million, that is likely to be scaled back a little bit more from the twenty-five. We were hoping for the full thirty, two thirty-four in the, in the Senate. That didn't happen. We had twenty-five in the House. It's likely in the conference process going to be brought back a little bit. How that ends up impacting the Thurston County acreage is yet to be seen. I haven't, I haven't seen any document or amended proviso at this point in time, but we'll continue to watch that as well.
When you say acreage on the HCP type stuff.
So, under the twenty-five million that had been proposed was to acquire a certain amount of acreage. And it's what they're calling the, the Deep River Woods tract in Waukeaham County. And so, it's a way of just sort of swapping trust lands. And what they were identifying is of the structurally complex, carbon-dense forestland eligible for nomination for conservation was to include two hundred and eighty-three acres in Thurston County in Capital Forest. That likely will shift down. As long as it stays in some form, it'll still be, I think, a win of some amount of acreage that otherwise we wouldn't have funding for. So, but keep you posted on that. And then, related to the tracker on the second page, under housing stability, affordability right of way, House Bill twenty-twelve, which was the tax exemption for nonprofits providing affordable rental housing, provided they receive some local jurisdiction funding as part of that. It is, did get out of Senate ways, ways and means and is in rules right now and awaiting being pulled to the floor. The next one, under bills of interest, the HB nineteen thirty-two, which is the general election shift for local governments to even-numbered years. No action was taken in ways and means, so that is currently dead. It won't make its way out. Senate Bill fifty-seven ninety-two, which is exempting buildings of twelve or fewer units, no more than three stories, as being multifamily. That one is still possible. It's sitting in House rules, but is able to be pulled to the floor prior to Friday, but we will see if that continues. The one below that, fifty-eight thirty-four, which is really around, is from Senator Short, focusing on UGA amendments. That is in House, was in House rules when I pulled this report together, but it passed yesterday, the House unanimously. So, it is, should be on its way to the governor for signing. So, that will provide us a little more flexibility. We did send two letters off to the governor asking for his signature to put those into laws, one being our local board of health flexibility bill and as well as the additional six months for completing of our comprehensive plan. And last but not least, the TPA bill, House Bill twenty-one thirty-seven, which allows us to exempt certain lodging businesses from charges within the TPA. That is a good thing. That one passed the Senate as well unanimously and should be on its way to the governor. So, what that will mean for us is that we won't have to amend our local ordinance that set that up because we did have some exclusions that were not necessarily allowed under the previous RCW. And that is all I have.
Questions? Nope. Okay. Then Commissioner Items, we have a few minutes. I have one. DNR sent us a email, I guess to me as chair, I assume, asking us to participate in one of their work groups that was required by the legislature of last session regarding ways, exploring ways DNR can generate revenue through carbon offset markets and other ecosystem services markets while achieving greenhouse gas emission reductions and removal on enhancing other ecosystem services. The group will meet six times between April twenty-fourth and June of twenty twenty-five. Meetings will be held remotely and be three hours. If someone in your, from your group is interested and available to participate, please sign up on this page. My suggestion would be to ask Rebecca to participate on our behalf. I don't know if that sounds reasonable to you guys. I would like, I think it'd be, given how much investment we put into this issue, it'd be useful to have our voice there and learning and exploring these ideas. And I don't really have the capacity to do it, but Rebecca could maybe represent us if that's something that she's, like you. Senator Kate? All right, I will give this email to the Assistant County Manager and he can touch base with her.
Sounds good.
That's all I had. Anything else?
I have something really quick. Just a request to, if we're going to use acronyms, say them the first time we use them so that everyone knows what we're talking about.
Good idea.
That's all I have.
The Department of Natural Resources has invited us. Was there a particular one that you were worried about?
Um, no.
But they do pop up quite regularly.
Actually, yeah, it was the one from yesterday after we got done talking about Jazzcom.
Yeah.
And then, we moved to the next one. And there was no paperwork.
We were getting confused between.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
There were no documents about what we were talking about, so I just had Jazzcom in front of me and I couldn't get off of like talking about Jazzcom. So, I went back and talked to Tracy and we were like, yeah, there's a couple of acronyms that maybe like the public, I mean, I usually, we usually have supporting documentation, but like. but like if someone's listening and we don't say it out loud, then maybe we don't know.
Yeah, I know. It's always up to practice. Good reminder. Commissioner Fornier?
I just wanted to share that I attended the EDC meeting earlier today remotely and the guest presenters were Ashley Arry and Jenica Machado to talk about the industrial land study. And they did an excellent job.
Awesome. Okay. Coming to the end of this afternoon's agenda, we're adjourned.